We're going to the meeting of the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, August the 7th. You would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. And is Josh from the Lemons here this evening? All right, then after the pledge, we'll be led in prayer this evening by one of our council members, Ron Bates.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I pray, Lord, we're thankful so much that we live in a land, Lord, where freedom prevails. And, Lord, we're just thankful that we're able to be here tonight and conduct, Lord, the business that we've been called to undertake. Lord, we pray for all those that are in harm's way tonight, as we always, always think about our servicemen, as well as our first responders here in our own city. We pray that for them, we pray for administration, fire, police, for all of those that are involved in making this the best place at which to live and to grow and raise a family. And we just ask tonight that you would prevail in our thoughts and that you would have your hand of blessing on this meeting, in Jesus' name.
Do you want to be seated? Roll call.
President.
Here. We do have a quorum. All of you should receive copies of our minutes from the last regular meeting on July 17th. Do I have a motion? Motion Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bates. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, then roll call in the minutes. This is approved with a vote of seven to zero with one abstention. Reports, Corporation Council.
The item semi-monthly reports available on sharepoint.
Are they going to control it this time? Any other committee or board reports? All right, moving on. On the agenda, this is the opportunity we set aside for members of the audience to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. There is a five-minute time limit per person and a 20-minute time limit per topic. So if you wish to address the council about something on the agenda, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, or if you're online, please speak up. All right, hearing none, then moving on, ordinance and resolutions. Notice of intent to consider, we have a request this evening to move ordinance 2316 to this time on the agenda. One of the principals involved in this ordinance, presenters, just got a phone call from his wife, and she is on her way to the hospital to have their first child. And he wants to catch a plane as quickly as possible and fly home to Atlanta. So would entertain a motion to move forward. Motion by Mr. Hopper. Second by Ms. Gibson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? All right, ordinance 2316. I'm sorry, 2326.
In order to amend official zoning map, adopted by records, unified development ordinance number 2029, proposed rezoning across 77 acres located 3111 South State Road 135, sponsored by Lexi.
Where's yours?
It's not my child. Good evening, President Campbell and members of the council. My name is Andy Borrother.
Oh, sorry, hold on. We need a motion on ordinance 2326. Motion of Ms. Gibson, second, by Mr. Hopper. All right, I'm sorry, thank you. You can go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, President Campbell and councilors. My name is Andy Borrother, the law firm, the favorite drinker, the office is at 600 East 96th Street, 600. I'm the attorney for Avenue Oakley Capital LLC, the petitioner under ordinance number 2326. With me to present to you are proposer Paul Lucian, representative of Ellis Park LLC, Lucian Investments, the landowner and co-developer, Scott Weathers with Avenue Oakley Capital, petitioner and co-developer, Chris Lake with Dell Design, project architect, and Dwayne Shear and Kevin Sumner with Y Engineers. I'd like to recap this PUD journey with you. We were before you on February 22nd of this year with a favorable, unanimous favorable recommendation for this proposal from the Greenwood Plan Commission, which the Common Council denied three to six on February 22nd. We requested a waiver of the city's one-year repiling rule pursuant to section 603 on June 26th, which the Plan Commission unanimously granted, and we filed our petition thereafter. Plan Commission heard this petition on July 24th again with a favorable staff recommendation and a unanimous recommendation date zero from the Plan Commission for approval to the Common Council. Avenue Oakley Capital and the landowner filed a zone map change and PUD ordinance in order to develop a quality mixed-use development on 77 acres and 3111 South State Road 135, named the Center Grove Park PUD District. It is a proposed planned unit development as allowed under state law 36741505 and section 10-3-17 Greenwood zoning ordinance. We included the financial projections for the positive tax revenue to the city from this project, which make a strong statement that a half as to how this project is financially very positive for the city. We've also discussed this with the police chief, Jim Isen, who did not have any concerns with this project. So we respectfully request that you adopt our PUD ordinance, subject to the five conditions as agreed upon with the Plan Commission, such as signs, trails, streets, and site design. As this proposed PUD fully complies with the city's comprehensive plan, it meets all the statutory criteria set forth in Greenwood's ordinance, including the current conditions and character of structures and uses, the most desirable use of the land, conservation of property values that are responsible with all bank growth. So Scott Weathers with Avenue Oakley will present the details of the PUD progress. Scott.
Thank you, Andy. Actually, I have a presentation I need to plug in. Thank y'all for allowing us to do this. I got a text message from my wife that is about four weeks early, three weeks early.
Resolutions.
Thank you, we're very excited, and I appreciate you all having me here tonight. All right. Again, thank y'all and good evening. Sorry, a little frantic right now. How do I get to go to the next slide? No? If I can go to a PUD or an STD. There we go. Our team, which is comprised of a partnership between Avenue Oakley Capital and Lucian Group. Avenue Oakley is a joint venture between two Berkeley integrated multifamily developers, owners, managers, with over 50 years of combined multifamily management experience. Lucian Group, an Indianapolis-based commercial retail owner-operator with over 40 years of experience in the industry. At Avenue Oakley, we developed a brand, Leo, which, if you remember, stands for love each other, which we also borrowed from the Indiana University football coach. And that acronym is not only the name of our communities, but is how we look at development. We want to foster communities where you're, you know your neighbor, you're friends with your neighbors, and you love your neighbor, and that's an extension, you love your community. We've also partnered with the Cat Architecture and Design, who is the programmatic architect and land planner for all of the Leo communities, as well as Dell Design, who is an Indianapolis-based designer. As a team, we are working to establish a homogeneous design for the entire community. We want you to walk through this community and to really blend between the commercial, the cottages, and the traditional multifamily, and their parts are laced throughout. Why does mixed-use develop? This is our mission statement, but in plain terms, we want to provide higher-quality, safe, alternative housing options that is walkable to dining, retail, grocery options, in what is referred to as a five-minute neighborhood. As mentioned by Andy, we heard your concerns at the last hearing about public safety, which is for us a top priority within our communities and for our neighbors. And our first step to alleviating those concerns was to speak with those in charge. Chief Isen, who confirmed support to our community, does not see it as a public safety concern. Furthermore, we follow something called SETED principles, which provides security for the built environment, with the strongest principles being that residents of the community watch out for their neighbors and neighborhoods, and placing activities for those neighbors to become part of the natural surveillance of the community. Additionally, for additional support statured in this slide, we had a tax consulting completed a study of the current potential tax revenues for the property. As you can see, the tax benefit will increase by almost $3.4 million per year, of which over three-quarters of a million would be to the benefit of the city, which we believe would go a long way to assisting in hiring and getting more police officers to help out in the future. Why this is different? Design meets optionality. I'll go into demographics in a few slides later, but we are trying to provide alternative housing options. The residential industry is changing, and we are working to provide the highest-quality housing option that are walkable to retail destinations. Vertical integration of services. As mentioned, our team has decades of experience owning and managing and operating personal multifamily communities. So we, this is not going to be a development that we farm out to a management company that is out of state or somewhere else, but will be present onsite. And the same detail and care that goes into the design and building this community will be carried out, carried into the upkeep, maintenance, and management of the community. Long view, we are not merchant developers. Our plan is to hold this development long-term, which means when we build with, which means we must build to a higher standard and maintain a high standard. Within the cottage community, there will be seven to nine full-time employees, of which will include two to three solace maintenance managers that will patrol the community on a daily basis, ensuring the property looks as good at year 15 as it does at year one. Similar approach will be utilized for both the commercials and the traditional multifamily components, and then delivering what people want. We are providing an all-inclusive community where neighbors can play in the park, walk to a restaurant. And now, who lives here? This is a study, believed by John Vermaat Real Estate Consultants, and through their study, they thought 26% of the community will likely be singles or couples. These are people that recently graduated, have good-paying jobs, but if they're anything like I was when I graduated, covered in student debt and not necessarily having equity to purchase a home or place a down payment to move into the, or want to move into the Greenwood community. We are also seeing a shift throughout in the thoughts of owning a home in this demographic. The younger generation isn't necessarily seeing the benefits to home ownership or purchasing a home. We are, sorry, we are seeing a shift in the thoughts of owning a home. This younger generation is no longer seeing the benefits of being tied down to a 30-year mortgage. That, that thought has really been exacerbated over the past several years, as home prices have doubled, tripled in value, are a cost, and now with interest rates skyrocketing, what might have been an affordable home two years ago is now a $3,500, $4,000 a month payment. Next, these are your young families, your single parents. Some of these might have been a young couple that started out living in a traditional apartment, then became pregnant and had a child, and were ready to move to something with the four-walls freedom of a home, but not ready to put a down payment on a house that they could move into the cottage community. A note, in communities that include the cottage-style rental component, we are seeing residencies that average closer to five years, and the neighbors that move out, traditionally when they move out, they're purchasing a home within the broader Greenwood community. They wouldn't be moving out of the community. And last, the mature adults, as I refer to as grand neighbor chasers, as y'all know, me and my wife are expecting here first, seems to be a little bit sooner than I thought, but we have realized that we're no longer that old of our parents' eyes. Those parents are grandparents already, and they are ready to, that grandchild is at the center of their attention. The community provides the housing option where they could maintain all the benefits of a home without the headaches of homeownership. If they need a light bulb change, they can call solace maintenance staff, they'll change the light bulb. If anything happened, a toilet clogs or breaks, solace maintenance is there to take care of it. And 100% of the community is going to be maintained throughout at all times by our facility staff. Or if they want to enjoy their retirement and go to Florida for a few months, they can lock the door and not worry about anything happening to their home, or their landscaping, flowers, or anything around their house. And as a benefit, it is the older generation, the Greenwood community, who have recently, who have owned a home for perhaps decades, have recently experienced that value increased, but they could only realize those benefits if they move out of the community to an area where home prices were less expensive. And this community gives them the opportunity to sell their home, move into the community, have a set rent rate, and really enjoy that equity that they earned in their home and still be close to the same, go to the same church they've always gone to, St. Barmacy, St. Gertrude, or be close to those friends that they've fostered over the past 10, 20 years. This is our concept site plan. On the left side, yes, left side of the screen, that is going to be the commercial space. That is going to be about 150,000 square feet of commercial space. In the center north is the cottage-style community with up to 300, it's currently signed, I believe, for 317 cottage-style homes, and then your traditional multifamily, which will house up to 250 units. And then you have common area A, B, and C. That's about 19 acres, over 19 acres of park and open space that will be open to everybody in the community, or in the broader Greenwood community to utilize. And the reason we wanted to go with this PUD approach is it gives us the flexibility to provide alternative housing options. Two-thirds of this property is currently on commercial large, which permits for multifamily, large commercial, retail, everything. So everywhere where you see Pub Street B, that's the horizontal road you see going through north, is all commercial large. But we wanted to feel to give more, give back to the community. So with this master plan community, it gives us option for the cottage-style rental development, as well as gives us the opportunity to capture that additional space for parks and and to encourage utilization of that open space for designing areas to accommodate for potential boot-truck two-stays. You see parking along the common area A or a farmer's market Sunday. If you see the commercial building where it says two, that is designed to allow for tents to go up, so a farmer's market could go there. And as a master plan meeting, we will own and maintain the property, having the onsite maintenance staff to oversee professional landscaping, ensuring all components of Center Grove Park will be maintained to the standards that we set forth from the beginning. The next few slides are just actual images and inspirational images for our design. These, the cottages that we will build would be in substantial compliance with what you're seeing in these images. And I'll just read through these very quickly. But what we want to do with this community, with the commercial and traditional multifamily, is blur the line between everything. So we're going to incorporate the crafts and style of design, so everywhere works, all the design components work together and blends together cohesively. And last, right now, I just want to show you the construction timeline. As you can see, we started out building the infrastructure for the entire community that will include the parks, the east-west road, north-south road. Leo Cottage would start first, and as we're starting to get it ready for COs, we get into the commercial area construction, so you have the rooftops to feed that retail, those restaurants, the coffee houses that will go there. And last, with the time is right, would be the vertical multifamily. And thank you very much, and look forward to answering any of y'all's questions.
Any questions from the council at this time? Hope things go well with your flight home and the birth of your child.
So my only question is, I let you know earlier about the two amendments I asked about, how do you feel about those?
Yes, I had a chance to talk to, and like the block, we could put, talk with the police department and provide a block security camera wherever they think best in looking at our site plan. I would assume either Clary Boulevard North or Clary Boulevard South, that is the, on the western side, that's the north and south entrance off of SR 135. We could assist in getting one of them installed.
And the other?
And also providing, we typically like to work with first responders, so we can typically do either for rape, but something we've also already talked about is courtesy officer, courtesy officer for the community that either it's where we base the onsite living expenses for him providing controlling throughout here.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Make a motion to amend, install, maintain a block camera, and provide a courtesy officer to the neighbor.
We have a motion by Mr. Hopper to amend ordinance 2326, as he mentioned. And a second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on the amendment to ordinance 2326? Are we ready to move on?
Yeah, I think I like your mind right there.
All right, any, any discussion on the amendment to the ordinance? Hearing none, then roll call on the amendment to ordinance 2326. Ordinance 2326 is amended with a vote of eight to zero.
Hi, council. Staff does recommend a favorable recommendation for this petition, as did our Plan Commission at its last Plan Commission meeting. It was an unanimous motion for approval to council. So I'm here for any questions you might have about the PUD or even what the PUD is. But I would just like to say that our comprehensive plan does call for mixed-use development in the future land use as the most desirable land use. That's exactly what they provided for us here. They worked with staff to connect the trails to existing trails, street stops for future developments, and they've also worked with us extensively on the landscaping, screening, even signage guidelines. We've been proud of the product that we've reviewed, and we hope that you guys approve this one, this PUD.
Any questions for Mr. Nelson? Any discussion on the council comments?
I would just like to share something that I received from Christian Vasklowski, the president and CEO of the Aspire Economic Development and Chamber Alliance. And he said, I saw this story this morning inside Indiana Newsletter and wanted to share it because it highlights a new single-family for rent neighborhood that just opened in Fort Wayne, which is the same concept the Avenue Oakley Group is proposing for Greenwood. I visited the mentioned neighborhood's website and discovered it is in a nice area of Fort Wayne. I used to live within a mile of it, in fact. It says the one that is being proposed is a little different because it includes some commercial along State Road 135, which adds value to the community and to nearby residents.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead.
Well, I'll offer different points to you. Certainly, I knew this has come up before, it's still fresh in mind. What concerns me, two major concerns that I have is number one, is that it's going to, obviously, projects up to 200, or up to 250 apartments. People tell me recently that we think we have enough apartments in our city to begin with, and I know that at some point in time, too, I mean, the supply is going to be greater than we, I don't know at what point that's going to be, but I think that's what happened. I know we have hundreds of apartments online already in our city. The one that concerns me probably more than that is that rental homes, up to 325 rental homes. My concern for, my point of view is that the people who, you know, nothing against the, who, whether it might be, nothing against that at all. But my thinking on that, and I heard the other side, and I appreciate that, about the big difficulty of buying a home today, perhaps that would be the next step, in rental home, and then be able to buy their own home. But what concerns me is that I believe that someone of that nature, they really don't have, what I would say, a stake in our community. You know, just, again, I say that because I believe the other side that coined it is just, I think it's the, it's the single-family homeowners that have a stake in our community. They're the ones that should be driving our community. They should be the ones who are making, helping make the decisions for our community, including the peoples who sit on this council. And so that's how I feel and how I believe about this particular ordinance, and I'm glad people can support it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bates, Mr. Middleton.
Thank you. First of all, congratulations. I shared with other members of council in the email, a change that I had with Superintendent Center of Schools, Dr. Arkenoff. I don't think it's anything specific to this project necessarily, but he, he said that, you know, they would rather not see multifamily dwellings in a TIF district because it has a negative impact on schools. So obviously, that goes into account. I also value the adding of more security to kind of alleviate any stress it may cause for police. I did have some firefighters reach out to me because it is outside of the fire district. So it would be Greenwood covering those. And then the local business kind of just not in favor of, of the rental homes. And so all of that kind of together, I, along with Mr. Bates, I think we have quite a few apartments and rental properties coming up, being built, approved, houses being built, approved. I just don't think this is the time or place for this right now.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Yes?
Yeah, I would like to add, those apartments look very, very nice, but I'm imagining the rent for that is probably, we said, we're talking about affordable housing, looking at a $1,700 to $2,000 a month payment on a rental property. I pay that for my house mortgage, so like it's, I don't know that that's any more affordable in my eyes when we're talking about cottages and things like that. So I, same thing, a lot of apartments going up and not all of them are filled yet, and it's kind of the worry that some will, will reseed.
All right, any other comments or questions on the council?
I just wanted to point out that on the time when that was presented, the apartment complex was five, six, seven years away, and by that time, we might need another set of apartments. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to address the comments from Councilor Bates on this. This just happens, it's last Wednesday, I had lunch with the president and CEO of my work, Chris Pryor, and we were talking about the current development going on in Greenwood. He expressed to me that he hopes that this project and many projects like this will go through because there is a housing shortage in Indiana, especially in central Indiana. I've talked to the owners of the Garrett Company through a building hangar out by Alim Coring. They're already filling up that apartment complex. It's leasing out. The Madison project down here has started leasing. They're going to start opening up in October, and they're seeing quite an influx of people. So I don't think we're going to have a problem with filling these places with people. There are people who are moving to the south side, who are potentially moving to the south side, which seem through our growth, that we are growing that way. And as far as the fire protection, police protection, these will just bring in more finance. And as far as the fire protection, police protection, these will just bring in more finances into the community, into the city that will be able to apply those towards capital projects, towards, towards capital purchases that will assist us in those different areas as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments or questions on the council? All right, here in the roll call, ordinance 2326 as amended.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Hilton?
Nay.
And Bates?
Nay.
Ordinance 2326 passes on a vote of five to three. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right.
In a police escort to the airport.
Ordinance 2323.
An order, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map adopted by reference, deemed by Hillman Ordinance Number 2029, proposed zoning across to 2.52 acres, located at 3186 and 3194 West Smith Valley Road, Holberg Property, sponsored by Lexi.
Have a motion, so Mr. Hopper, second. Second, Mr. Lexi, I do want to say, I, we postponed this twice and at the last meeting, Mr. Holberg was not here. And I spoke with him after the last meeting. And at the meeting that he was at, the first meeting where we talked about this, that was on a Wednesday night, which is unusual. And he was told at that meeting, in fact, I probably told him, that our next meeting would be in two weeks. And so he came on Wednesday night, even though we had our meeting on Monday. And so he did his diligence, just misunderstanding about the exact date. So I want to make that clear, that's why he was not here last time, was because he was here two weeks later, not the week and not 10 days later. So, all right, Mr. Holberg?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know exactly what you want me to, what we repeat about the property, what I'm asking for.
I think really all we're looking for is whether or not you'll agree to the stipulations I put on there.
I don't have a problem with, yeah, I'm just looking for a commercial meeting zoning. So it's 69, I'm about clear up in the next 60 days or 90 days, I'd like to start being a remark on property.
And I don't, I don't know if you had a chance to look through the list?
Yes, sir, I did.
All right, just thank you, sir.
Yeah.
All right, then for the record, we have a motion by Mr. Hopper to amend ordinance 2323 to prohibit the following. Clothing services, dry cleaning, crematorium, school primary, school secondary, dwelling assisted, dwelling developmental disability, dwelling group, dwelling nursing, food service, quick service, fast food with a drive-through, medical, full-service hospital, overnight lodging, extended stay, overnight lodging hotel, retail, convenience with gasoline, school, post-secondary, vehicular gasoline with convenience store or convenience sales, vehicular gasoline without convenience sales, and vehicular car services, non-major. Is that, pull this? All right, we have a motion, Mr. Hopper, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion on the motion to amend ordinance 2323? All right, roll call on amendment to ordinance 2323.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Hilton?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
And Campbell?
Motion is passed on vote of eight to zero. Any discussion on ordinance 2323 as amended?
I have something, Mr. Campbell. I appreciate you reaching out to us. That's not something we always get as far as a phone call with the person asking for something like this, so I appreciate that. The only thing I have to say is the previous instances of a reason without sort of knowing what we're going to have. While the commitments limit what can go there, there's still a lot of unknown as far as what that's going to look like, who's going to have it, how it's going to be developed. We still have residential on two of the four sides with a road and a lumberyard on the other two. So I, I just have concerns going in that direction again, not knowing exactly what's going to go in there, knowing that there are going to be other people's houses involved that could be impacted on however this is developed, when it is developed.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Can't say so.
Yes.
The answer that, you know, what I'm trying to do is go to help you, all alone, there's seven and a half acres there, or seven acres. That's not on the market, that people are willing to sell, but they don't want to get a builder involved, they don't want to do any of the work or anything. So when I put that hard corner up for sale, two and a half acres, that's going to open some minds to some developers. And then they're going to start asking some questions, what about the rest of this property? Right now, I'm not very feeling properly, city or on ourselves. That's why I bought the house next door, toward Dan. Road front. Well, that makes any sense to you, doesn't it?
All right, any other questions or comments on the council? Yes, Gabe?
If I may, um, so I know it can be, I guess, scary not knowing the exact project that's open there. I'd say that is why we have a unified development ordinance with planning, engineering, and stormwater staff. We have in our ordinance buffering, buffering increases when it's next to residential. And I guess that's kind of the, the purpose of zoning is not to select the exact project, which sometimes we're able to do because a project is asking for the zone matching. Zoning is intended to give someone a category of uses and standards that allow them with information to pursue that property and develop it in any way that that zone allows for. So I know there's some uses that we kind of are, are trying to avoid that we've amended the ordinance to include, but really the intent of the site development and site selection is where planning staff are outside with you and our unified development ordinance come into play with these developers. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the council? Here in the roll call, ordinance 2323 as amended.
Gibson?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Hilton?
Nay.
Bates?
Aye.
Petron?
Aye.
And Campbell?
All right, ordinance 2323 passes on a vote of seven to one. Thank you. All right, first reading, resolution 2310.
A resolution declaring certain area within the city of Greenwood an economic revitalization area, qualifying certain maintenance equipment for tax evasion and setting the time and place for public hearing, Natchitochi Technology, Inc., Natchitochi Tool America, sponsored by Campbell.
Have a motion. Some, motion by Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lexi, I think. Any discussion on the resolution 2310? Here in the roll call, resolution 2310, first reading.
Yes.
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Hilton?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2310 passes, first reading, eight zero. None under second reading, public hearings, resolution 2321.
To resolution of the Greenwood Common Council terminating personal property tax payment for religious, religious use of equipment, Euxistics, Inc., Diddy Bowes, sponsored by Hopper.
Have a motion, motion, Mr. Hopper, second. Second by Ms. Gibson. This is a public hearing. Open up the public hearing, anybody wishing to speak for or against resolution 2311? Please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, or if you're online, please speak up. Anyone? Hearing no one, public hearing, any discussion on the council? Here in the roll call, resolution 2311.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Hilton?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Petron?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
And Phil?
Resolution 2311 passes on a vote of eight to zero. Second public hearing, resolution 2312.
A resolution modifying and confirming resolution 2308, the declaration of certain area within the city of Greenwood an economic revitalization area, qualifying certain property improvements, private tax abatement, and setting time and place for public hearing, Gateway Park Building Two LLC, sponsored by Campbell.
Have a motion. So, motion by Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Petron. This is a public hearing, open up the public hearing, anybody wishing to speak for or against resolution 2312? Please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, or if you're online, please speak up. Seeing no one, close the public hearing, any discussion on the council? Here in the roll call, resolution 2312.
Lexi?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Petron?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And Hopper?
Aye. Resolution 2312 passes on a vote of eight to zero. New business introduction to new ordinances or resolutions, ordinance number 2327.
An ordinance providing for additional appropriations for mayor and rest complaint, coronavirus, local physical recovery and fund, budget classification 449 and $95,000. In the cumulative capital improvement cigarette tax fund to budget classification 449, $180,000, sponsored by Bates and Gibson, set for public hearing August 21st, 2020.
Anybody want to talk to us about this one?
I spoke to Mr. Wright, he asked me to fumble through as best I could, keep in mind that my undergrad's in political science, not a county. So this is a pay for, again, our, our fair share of the local election coming up in November. Everybody has municipality, along with the county, has to portion their fair share of pay for the election, poll workers and such like that. I'm not going to pay for the cigarette tax fund, and then also for computer security, a firewall, in order to make sure we don't get hacked or taken advantage of or get taken, become a victim of a ransomware type attack.
All right, any questions at this time? Right, resolution 2313.
A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council authorizing participation in a local association for an additional five-year period, sponsored by Gibson. Request for suspension rules through first reading.
All right, do you have a motion to suspend the rules through first reading? Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hopper, any discussion on suspension? Hearing none in roll call, suspension of the rules through first reading, resolution 2313.
Hilton?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Petron?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
And Lexi?
Aye.
Rules are suspended on resolution 2313 through first reading on a vote of eight to zero. Have a motion for resolution 2313 first reading. Motion by Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bates. Anybody want to talk to us about this one? Okay, any discussion on the council?
I guess my question is, maybe you don't, but what exactly does the inter-local association do? Like what, what, what is our role in that one?
All right.
Great question.
Somebody want to answer that?
Might be a mayor question, he's out there busy.
Yeah. We will get an answer to that question by our next vote. All right, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none in roll call, resolution 2313 first reading.
Bates?
Aye.
Petron?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, did everybody vote aye?
Yes.
Okay. All right, resolution 2313 passes, first reading, eight to zero. Resolution 2314.
A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council expressing interest in the purchase of certain real property on County Line Road, sponsored by Hopper.
Trails.
It, this, so we're building the Parks Department is doing the trails from County Line to Fry Road. This would be, this would be property, this is a right across street from the hospital there. Toward the trail would end, it'd be essentially a trailhead where they, well, even that you can actually put there because it's in a floodplain and under the, the power lines, the parking lot or something like that.
The purpose of this is to make it public that we're interested in purchasing, not, this is a vote to purchase.
No, no, because the, the value of this property is probably going to be over $25,000. The Parks Department just can't go out to buy it without council approval to get into negotiations with the owner to purchase the property.
All right. Any questions?
Do you know what the price is, or is that still?
I, they, they haven't gotten that far, they, they've categorized and bothered to.
Yeah, I think this is the first step that we have to take before they can enter into negotiations. All right, miscellaneous business, this is the second opportunity for members of the public to address the council this time concerning items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if you'd like to do so, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, or if you're online, please speak up. All right? Seeing none in council, miscellaneous business, anything? Everybody doing all right? All right, other miscellaneous business, corporation council?
Nothing, corporation council.
Controller? Mayor? Your turn. Thank you, everyone.